They call the meeting in order. We rise for the pledge of allegiance. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Nakko?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Getche?
Yeah. Anybody signed up for public appearance?
Negative.
Do we have any school committee communications? I'm going to turn the meeting over to student rep Cam Coza.
Student activities started 2024 with an amazing open house experience, featuring stations where eighth grade visitors and their families could learn all about all that greater Lowell has to offer. Members of our dance club and music club demonstrated their talents. Our N A B T bio club had specimens to examine under microscopes, and our Ask the Student station provided opportunities for our guests to ask specific questions. In addition, many other clubs had informational booths and games on display to capture the interest of our next generation of Griffins. Skills USA once again hosted the Community Outreach Challenge in conjunction with the January Open House. Students from all 23 technical areas created interactive stations to assist the eighth graders in understanding what it feels like to be a career in technical education student. This year, they also had a station created by our ninth grade digital literacy students. The environmental club has taken the reins of the recycling program for the entire building. Each floor now has a dedicated team of eco warriors ensuring that recyclable materials find their way to the right bins. This initiative has been a resounding success with a significant increase in the number of materials recycled and a noticeable reduction in waste. On January 24th, the outing club will participate in the Guard Fit Challenge sponsored by the Massachusetts Army National Guard. This challenge will include 15 different CrossFit challenges meant to promote physical fitness and help students practice perseverance, resilience, and positive thinking. Music Club is looking for new ways to move their talent from the lecture hall into our school community. Over the next few months, they are hoping to develop a pep band and work on national anthem arrangements for athletic events. They are also hoping to collaborate with some of our other clubs to create a spring talent show. The freshman and sophomore planning committees had a very successful community service event in December where over 50 students joined them to decorate holiday cards for the residents at Deuville Life and Wellness. They also had a scrumdiddlyumptious time seeing the new Wonka movie at Chunky Cinema. Coming up next, the sophomore planning committee is hosting an MCAS relaxation event to help 10th grade students get in the right mindset for their first MCAS of the year. During the event, they will be making stress reduction and fidget items as well as learning techniques to help reduce test anxiety appropriate for the MCAS setting. Drama Club has been very busy with auditions for this year's production entitled Radium Girls. The play is inspired by a true story and traces the efforts of Grace Fryer, a dial painter, as she fights for her day in court. GSA attended the regional conference meeting on December 13th at Neshobatech. Here, students learned more about themselves and their community that they are a part of. They discussed issues impacting the LGBTQ community, what their school community is like for LGBTQ students, and what they can do to improve it. On January 18th, 16 freshmen will be going to the Massachusetts Army National Guard Armory to participate in Skills USA Massachusetts First Freshman Conference. At this event, freshmen will learn what Skills USA is, why to get involved, and what Massachusetts has to offer to students who participate in Skills USA. In addition to the freshmen attending this event, five chapter officers will be facilitating a booth at this conference for the freshmen across the state to experience. Skills USA will be returning to the National Guard Armory on January 25th to compete in the M R E challenge. Two teams of culinary students will compete against C T E students statewide to determine who can make the best gourmet meal using nothing but military meals ready to eat packages.
That's pretty cool.
Boys and girls basketball picked up recent non-league wins over Fenway High School and New Heights Charter School. The boys have a big league game tomorrow night at Lowell Catholic while the girls host Whittier on Monday. Swim and dive have had a great season, and they are preparing for the C A C League meets on January 24th and 25th at Shawshene and Lynn Tech. Wrestling picked up recent wins over Wilmington and Salem High School. The team will also be hosting the state vocational wrestling tournament on January 27th. Hockey currently sits at 6-4-1 as they head into the home stretch of the season, hoping for a tournament berth. Both boys and girls indoor track remain undefeated as they prepare for the C A C League meet on Sunday, February 4th at the Reggie Lewis Center. Competition dance teams have started prepping for the winter competition season while they continue doing a great job performing at home basketball games in the early season. The cheer team is preparing for the C A C League tournament, which will be hosted for the first time ever here at Greater Lowell on February 25th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Happy doing it.
Yeah. Can we get a motion approved a minute from December 14th meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Give a second?
Second.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the warrant?
So much.
Can I get a motion to approve the expenses of $4,905,948 in one set?
Approved.
Second?
Okay.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Nakko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Do we have a report of the general counsel? Do we turn it over to the superintendent director?
Thank you. The first item on my agenda this evening, I'd like to invite information technology instructor Mr. Stephen King and junior information technology student Madison Coza to come up to the table, please. So tonight, before we do that, I just want to say a couple of things about Madison. So we have a very special presentation tonight and a special recognition. So we'd like to recognize student Madison Coza, who's here in front of you, for her incredible innovation and technical abilities. Madison was the winner of this year's Third District Congressional App Challenge and was presented not too long ago with a certificate by U.S. Congresswoman Lori Trahan at Greater Lowell on December 19th. She has been invited to the House of Code, a special program in celebration at the Capitol in April, and she also earned a chance to attend a three-month class at the Penguin School of Coding and Action at no cost. Madison won the challenge by creating an app called Carbon Calc, which helps users understand what a carbon footprint is, what their own carbon footprint consists of, and learn what they can do to lessen it so that users can better understand their impact on the environment. So I'd like to first of all congratulate Madison on this achievement and welcome her, and tonight she's here to demonstrate for you her app, her prize-winning app, I should say. So I'm going to turn it over to Madison. I'm going to step out of the way.
My app has two parts to it. So the first part is a quiz section where you can answer questions about what are like regarding carbon footprints. And then if you get it right, it'll tell you you're right. Or if you pick a wrong answer, it will explain to you why, and then you can click.
That's the part I need.
And then you can click to learn more about it. Or there's other sections where you can learn more. Like here, you can cycle through the carbon cycle just by clicking. And then if you wanted to, you could listen to the paragraphs about it, but it runs through a long time, so I won't do that.
So Madison, can you talk a little bit about how this could impact individuals and their impact on the environment?
So if people learn like how their carbon footprint is impacting the environment, then they can take steps towards like lessening it so that they're not outputting as much carbon. And like I have different sections in the app where it teaches people ways they can reduce their carbon footprint.
Can you talk about some of those ways?
So like right here, we have you can like drive an electric car over a gas-powered car, or you can eat less red meat, or use clean energy sources to power your house. And then it gives you your score at the end. And then if you wanted to, you could click a link, and it'll teach you more about ways to reduce. And then the second section of the app, you can calculate your carbon footprint so that if you know your own carbon footprint, then you can decide is it good or if it's bad. So before you calculate, you can look at what a good carbon footprint is and what's a high carbon footprint. And then you can, if you wanted to see the carbon footprint produced by your driving habits, you can enter how much you drive per year and your fuel economy. So let's say we drive 10,000 miles a year, and you have a 25 for your fuel economy. Then it outputs your carbon footprint produced by that. And then you can come back here and scale it. And then that's the same for your electricity and how much you travel by plane each year. And then if you wanted to, you can find your total carbon footprint by entering all the values. And then you can come back here and scale it. And then if you wanted to, you can learn how to reduce it from this website.
How long did it take you to create this?
Yeah, really?
I did it in a week.
Oh, okay, a week. It takes some of these guys a week to send a text message. Good for you.
You spent seven days on it?
How many hours a day, though?
I don't remember. I think most of it was trying to work on the video that I had to submit explaining it because that was the biggest part. The coding wasn't really the hardest part because I had already coded before in class, so I was just kind of like taking what I learned and putting it.
Madison, do you want to talk about some of your certifications? Or maybe just give us a summary, sorry?
It's better than this, though. If you created an app that's probably going to be used worldwide. It's just.
Have people downloaded your app?
It's not on the App Store yet.
Oh, okay.
Will it be on the App Store?
They gave me like a publishing license, so I can try to submit.
Oh, yeah. Make sure that thing's all protected before you let it go online. That's awesome. I'm willing to try it.
She just talked about that.
Good for you.
Something about certifications.
Oh, so in my shop, we like work towards getting like technical certifications. So I have 21 for like coding in Python, JavaScript, web design, data analytics, computation, thinking.
And she's a junior, so she still has.
IT fundamentals.
There's a whole wall in the sophomore shop.
I love it.
The whole wall, you have your certifications posted on the wall. So I just want to say again, congratulations. We're very proud of Madison and this incredible achievement. And she will be going to Washington. We'll find out when. And just a great example of vocational education at its best.
That's awesome. Congratulations. Good for you.
Also, thank you to her instructor, who works hard to.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Achievement is great.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
The next item on my agenda, I'd like to recognize and congratulate our senior electrical student, Gabe Stickney. However, unfortunately, Gabe is unable to be here tonight because he is very ill. But I'd like to take a moment to congratulate him in his absence. Gabe is a four-year wrestling athlete, and recently, he participated in the famous George Bossi Lowell Holiday Wrestling Tournament, and he won in the 150-pound weight class, something that we haven't done in many, many, many years at Greater Lowell. So we're very proud of Gabe and his athletic achievement. Also, Gabe has recently been accepted to New England College, where he plans to continue his wrestling career. So congratulations to Gabe Stickney, a senior in the electrical program and a star wrestling athlete.
Was he able to get any type of funding? Through the wrestling, is there any?
I'm not sure if the, what the school offered, but I know he did accept. And I think, I don't think they give scholarships for wrestling, but they do. The achievement is they, I think they asked him to be part of their wrestling program. So that's.
Very new school.
He's on top of his game.
Yeah. So we're proud of Gabe.
I'm sure you are.
And I hope that Gabe feels better. Because there's a big tournament next week.
The 27th. I'm sure he'll feel a lot better.
He'll make weight anyways in a second.
He's already made weight.
The next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. The report that is in your packet indicates 220 out of 553 senior students participating in our cooperative education program at the end of December, which is 41% of the class of 2024. This is also a great achievement. We, this is the first time that we have seen these numbers and I think the first time in a very, very long time. A copy of the December report is in your packet, and I'm happy to say that on February 5th, we will be sending out our junior students. So I look forward to updating you on that at the February meeting.
This is great news.
Yeah, very, very good news.
I don't think I've ever seen 41% co-op.
No, I don't think we have ever achieved, especially at this time of the school year. So our goal would be 50%.
Exactly. Fifty percent.
Well, I'm not sure if we're going to achieve that this year, but in the next couple of years, our goal is to reach that 50%, if not higher.
To be in the 30s is high.
Yeah, so.
This is just next.
Again, a thank you to Stacy and Brian Jones, who's doing an awesome job. The next item on my agenda, I'd like to ask the Director of Practical Nursing, Christine Messina, to join us along with the admissions director, Jen Machado. So please, Christine. And they are going to answer any questions pertaining to Mr. Bahu's request regarding lowering and restructuring the down payment for in-district residents. And also, I address Mr. Hogan's question in regards to the percentage of in-district and out-of-district students that are currently in our nursing program. Do you want to start with that first?
Okay. We started off with 50 students in district, 24 out of district, and three out of state this year. It's kind of a hit and miss, depending on Jen, the admissions director, and who she admits and where they live. This year, we did have a relatively high number of in-district. Usually, it's 40 to 44 students, but it's a high number this year.
Well, that's awesome. Because I, on all these years being here at Lowell, it's always been, like you said, you know, just half or less than half that come from in-district. Was that part of recruitment, or was that just word of mouth?
Word of mouth.
Yeah, word of mouth. Because we don't advertise our LPN. Do we take out an advertisement in the newspaper like once a year or something like that?
No, we haven't done that.
How great is that?
Yeah.
So I guess last month, there was, you know, this discussion. And I noticed that we charge $7,500 for our in-district co-op, I'm sorry, for our in-district LPN program. And it's such a great price.
Yeah.
But I was looking at, you know, the overall cost of out-of-district and out-of-state. And I noticed that their down payment, for the most part, is $4,000 of the $12,000 that they are required to spend or required to pay. And I was curious, is there a way that, because when you compare it price-wise, it seems like, you know, the people from in-district, and I like to think of people that are in-district, a lot of them from Lowell, I'm sure they are. Sometimes, you know, they don't have as many funds to spare. And I'm curious, is there a chance to maybe lower the down payment that's due by June 28th of the $3,500 because of it being such a reduced overall cost?
No.
No, because?
We, the students are, I've told, and Jen can attest this, that upon an interview, that they have different ways to pay for the program. However, the down payment is not covered by financial aid. Okay, so they're told that right up front, that when you get admitted, you get your admission letter that the beginning, usually the beginning of July, that they have to come up with the down payment. Now, the reason for the down payment, obviously, is so that we can get, what is it, 41%?
It's a little less than 50% because 50% would be 3,750 if it was 50% of that 7,500. So it's a little less. And from when we went up from the prices, it was raised from 3,000 to 3,500. So just $500 more to gain a little bit more of that capital that you're going to speak to.
Right, the capital, yes. I did bring along, so right now, if you have, if they do not qualify for financial aid, they have options. You need to pay out of pocket. And then they work with Jen and with a cash payment plan. And they have a few months to come up with, they have a due date in September, October, November. And then December starts term two, so they have to have their bill paid up by now. So we strive very hard to keep that amount low because from the minute that they're interviewed, they're told, cut down on your work hours, you know, work as much as you can during the summer. But once you start school, it's very hard to be successful if you're working a lot.
It's a difficult program.
Yeah. So right now, if we, with the $3,500 down payment, their payments, which are due every month for three months, is 1350. Okay? We usually do not have a problem with students paying that because they know up in advance when they sign. And then we do have to chase after them for the money sometimes. If we were to take away that down payment, that would make a dramatic increase.
If we reduce it, it would make an increase on their times when they're actually expected to be a part of the program.
Yes.
Advance, to be a part of the advanced program, which gets completed in one year, when it's generally a two-year program for most other places. I understand that. They really don't have time to work. And if they do.
We try not to have them work.
Right, we try not to have them work. Okay, I mean, I understand that. Let me just, but let's just talk about this just for a second. While we have your ear.
Okay.
How about the, what are the options for scholarships? What are the options for financial aid? Is there, you know, I'm sure I'm speaking to you, Ms. Machado. Right, that's available to.
So financially, they actually deal with Jackie Carthy, who's the financial aid director. So on interview, I talk with them about the cash payment plan as well as financial aid. And they need to go on the F A S A website and sign up for that. The financial aid isn't looked at until they're actually accepted into the program. So when they're accepted into the program, the director of financial aid reaches out to them to let them know if they're eligible for a Pell Grant or if they're eligible for a loan, whether it's a subsidized or unsubsidized. So that that's made aware to the student as well. So that's made to them at that time.
Great. Do a lot of them qualify for the financial aid and the?
I would say that over 50% are the ones that actually get financial aid.
Okay.
Which is great.
Are we talking about in-district only, or are we talking about the overall?
Overall.
Yeah, the overall. So 50% qualify.
Probably even more, probably even beyond 60%, honestly.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, a lot of them get financial aid, which is, which is great that it's available to them.
Got you. And if they don't qualify for financial aid, if they don't have the money.
Then they have the option for a payment plan.
Of the payment plan, but they still need that.
They still need the upfront cost.
$3,500 down by essentially July 1st. Got you. Okay.
This year, it went to just June 28th, just based on how that holiday felt. Yeah, so we changed it a little bit. And, you know, we do give them a little leeway. We understand, you know, sometimes if they can't make it right.
Do we lose many students that can't afford it?
This year, we lost probably about 11 for other reasons, whether it was a pregnancy, a death in the family, illness. And some of them actually just realized that I can't cut down my hours. They, we have such a good standing out in the community.
Sure.
That a lot of, it's word of mouth. So they might know someone that's done the program, and they want to be successful. So they realize, I want to come next year because I want to be successful.
Okay.
So they're actually just planning this so they can be successful.
So a lot of times, it's not due to the finances.
Yeah, yeah, it's unfortunate we had some tests and then personal issues for a lot of the students.
Okay, well, this is great. You know, I mean, you know, I'm always asking about the LPN program. I have, Christine, for about 12 years. But, you know, I thank you, you know, for being here and sharing that information. Does anybody else have any questions?
I had a question.
Sure. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You go to the school committee, and you think you run the meeting, huh? Same type of grant or funding as other programs?
In terms of?
What's available to them as far as, is it equivalent to? I don't, I don't know if they're looked upon as a specialty or not.
So they're federal loans.
So it's across the board?
Yeah, so either subsidized or unsubsidized.
Yeah.
What their degree is, no.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's our graduation rate?
Are we going to get the?
Of the kids that sort of sign on the 77 that sign on. There's usually, what, maybe 60 to graduate?
65, maybe for lucky 66.
Got you. Because it's all accelerated.
It is. And in term one, we have a tendency to lose a lot of students because they were not aware. They didn't understand the rigor of the program, and they couldn't keep up with the seven classes because you need a 75, 77 average on most of your classes and a 75 average on two of the classes. So it's, you know, it's very tough.
Yeah, sure.
It's very tough to get a 77. And, you know, they fail a few tests, and then they never get themselves started, and it just keeps going down from there.
Sure, and I've been to the graduations in the second semester. You know, I know those, those students carry each other and support each other, and they talk about that at the graduation.
Yeah.
And I'm sure a lot of those, you don't lose many of those at that point.
Not so much. I mean, we might have, for term two, it's a little, it's a little bit, I don't want to say it's not easier, but they're in clinical more. So they're in clinical three days a week, and then they have class two days a week. So on one hand, they're getting hands-on three days a week so that, you know, the brain's always going, and they've got to do the paperwork and all that other stuff. On the other hand, they have two days to have all their tests. So every single day, they have an exam, and sometimes two exams. So, you know, it's kind of a balancing act. I mean, for those that thrive, you know, in the, in the learning environment and can actually put the two pieces together when it comes down for the test, you know, it's, it makes kind of a little bit more sense. Then there's others that don't really, they study just for the test, and they can't bring in the fact that they just took care of somebody that had that same diagnosis. So why can't you answer those type of questions?
Sure. Left side of the brain, right side of the brain.
It just, yeah, depends on the student. If they, you know, and it takes a while to click, usually after the midterm. Well, I used to be a teacher. I, that's, that was my favorite time of year because light bulbs went off.
They start applying it more, you start seeing it, which is really nice.
Yeah.
I think Ms. Messina has one more topic to discuss before we leave in regards to institutional name.
Yes. I actually, Mike was going to bring it up too, but I'll bring it up. Okay. I have a request to, right now, the, the name of the school, the program is Greater Lowell Technical School Practical Nurse Program. Okay? And I would like to propose to you to change it to Greater Lowell Technical School of Practical Nursing, just to make it more. You know, kind of individualized. It's not going to change anything. You know, the staff is still the same. You know, it's really, it's, it's just a name change. There are some schools in the state like Shawshine. They have, they're, they are the Shawshine School of Practical Nursing. I think Diamond is a School of Practical Nursing. Then there's other schools that call themselves nursing academies or nursing education departments. I mean, so everybody kind of has their own thought.
Still Greater Lowell is part of the school.
Yes, it's just.
It's not in itself.
You have a motion? I'll have a second.
I'll put a motion for just what you asked for, which is the Greater Lowell Technical School of.
Practical Nursing.
Freddie made the motion. Matt made the second.
Matt, your second.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Narko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Babu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask them.
Sure.
During, when they come in, they're in an interview process? Is there specifics, dress code, makeup, piercings, comb?
Unfortunately, since COVID.
Yes. So we do talk to them about that and we go through the handbook with the dress code and that they need to be in uniform when they're in lab, of course. And when they go into clinical, they should have natural hair color. And we go through some of the school's policy. There's just so much information that I find that we even have a checklist just to ensure that we're getting all this information to them. They unfortunately don't hear all of it. They hear a large part of it. But I find that it has to be repetitive and we continue to tell them. We tell them on orientation day as well. We talk about professionalism. We talk about the school code with them. So they certainly get it many times and we do try to embed that into them, for sure. Yes.
Yeah. Unfortunately, cannot, I'm sorry. But no, no. But after COVID, unfortunately, the interviews had to go via Zoom to try to limit the amount of students coming in and out for their half hour, 45 minute interview. So that has kind of changed the flavor a little bit of Jen's interviews. You can only see what you can see. And again, what you see might not be what you see once they start, when they start in the program.
Yeah, I know someone in, in one of the colleges. And when she does her interview, they'll say, that piercing?
Can't be there. Yeah. Where the hair color, I'll say with them, you can't have that. Yeah.
There's restrictions. Yeah, no restrictions. You gotta, that's.
Yep.
Well, they sign the handbook.
Yeah.
They're given it to her during the summer. They're told to read it. They get two introductory letters, one in July, one in August, with health records, book list, all the paperwork that they have to sign, parking passes and all that. And, and one of the things that they do have to do is read the student handbook and then be prepared to sign it. On orientation day, I only have a certain amount of time before the teachers have to teach them technology to kind of hit the highlights. You know, attendance, grading policies, you know, attendance, yeah, attendance, grading policies, clinical absences. So I can only hit the, the highlights. And dress is one of them.
I mean, do you find at a point, somewhere in the middle there, that all of a sudden now, someone decides to change their hair color or?
We have had to deal with that.
So we call them in and say?
Call them on the phone.
Yep.
As you understand, the policy is no hair color.
Unfortunately.
And then it was, you know, a little bit of discontent there. And I waited a few weeks and I said, clinical starts up on December, whatever it was, the 12th, and you will not be there if your hair is still blue.
So professional, professional, following the professional code is something that we try to encourage and enforce.
Yeah.
Are we moving back towards in-person interviews? Or is it sort of staying in the Zoom category right now?
For right now, it's Zoom. We, with ATI testing as well, we also have that Zoom. We were one of the only schools actually with ATI that were still doing paper pencil. So they kind of encouraged us to move to the online sector of doing that because it's all moved to that where students can't get here, applicants can't get there, but they can. I mean, sometimes I'll have someone say, can you talk to me on a Saturday at 12:30? And they're on their break because they're so excited about getting in the program and can I meet them? So I really do try to accommodate to the times that they have available to. So that makes it easier for me to speak with them when they have availability as well because I understand they have lives and it, you know, can be very stressful to accommodate an interview time too.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You feel comfortable with that?
I do. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot, but I do find time and, and they, they're pretty good. If for some reason I couldn't meet with them on a Saturday at 12 o'clock, it might, they might say, can we do a Tuesday at 4:30? And so when I know it's admission time, I kind of allocate that time for me. That's my busy time. Yeah.
She's also a full-time instructor on days.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I know this is questions about the last meeting, but are we supposed to vote on the program as proposed?
There's been no changes to it at all.
There was no change.
There was no changes, but I know we're waiting for those.
We voted on a $50, we voted on a $50 increase.
As long as that was set, because I know we had questions about it, so.
Yeah, there was more questions to the down payment.
I remember that. I know if that, like, canceled on the last.
Yeah, I think we're good.
You're good. Just making sure we don't want to come back here in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
And the last item on my agenda, but not the least to say that, I'd like to invite our chair coach Jen Riley and our assistant coach Maya Medina, along with our senior captains Myra Pyris and Maddie Bradley to join us again to provide, to provide information regarding out-of-state travel. And I'll let them share their exciting news.
Yes. So this past fall, we placed highly at our state competition after winning our CAC leagues for the first time in seven years, which was very exciting. Maya was the last team to do it. We're going to talk about whole years now. And then because of our scoring, we went virtual competition nationally. So out of 96 teams that competed, we came in second out of our division and the entire competition.
Awesome.
Yes. So we were very excited. They actually sent us a banner, which we need to go up and show Ms. Davis.
Let's see that. We got to hang the banners.
Very exciting. It's like a week of Christmas. It's fantastic. So because of that, we were given what was called an award, the Ruby Package Award, to come and invited to compete at Merit Cheer in Orlando, Florida, which is a very prestigious competition. A little Catholic competed there last year along with some other Massachusetts teams. And the girls, not directly, but the families anticipating that we would be competing at some sort of elite level had been fundraising themselves since the end of last school year. And even though, you know, cheer might not realize to other people, we go, we're probably one of the longest sports. We start our trials in June. We go to camp in July. And we're still going till the end of March when all of the other winter seasons have finished. So these girls really dedicate so much time and they are amazing athletes. And this team has come so far because their freshman year was COVID and we weren't even allowed to do stunting. So to go for almost a year and a half to not be able to do anything to build this kind of team where we're competing nationally. And we placed sixth last year in the nation in our division. And we had never gone to nationals ever with this school. So it was very exciting. So what we are proposing and asking is first of all, of course, permission to travel out of state to Florida. We have now taken this team. We've only lost one senior last year. So it's literally the same team that went away. We've taken them to camp a couple of times and they are wonderfully behaved students and athletes. And it's our pleasure to chaperone them. So we are looking for one extra staff member to come with us. The parents have raised $12,000. And we were looking for help and assistance also on the balance of the remaining for us to be able to attend this competition the weekend of March 15th through the 17th.
I'll make the motion.
Sure.
So they're looking for 14.
Looking for 14. So Jen, you guys made camp out of park. You lost some, correct?
Yes. They actually raised, the parents raised over $6,000 to send every single chaperone and athlete.
So basically, the parents have raised a little close to $20,000.
Yes.
To put the girls through camp and stuff. I'll make that motion. Do I have a? They raised as much as 50%. So great job. Listen, congratulations on firstly, your trip to Atlanta last year.
Oh, yeah.
No, Texas.
Texas.
Yeah.
Texas. Just, I missed by a few miles. Close enough.
50%.
Secondly, you must be really excited to go see Mickey Mouse.
We're actually not going to be in Disney, believe it or not. It's universal.
You'll be fine. You'll be fine. You'll be fine.
You have anything to add, Madam Superintendent?
Well, my cheerleaders know how I feel. I'm proud of them. Probably at every game and every, every competition, I should say.
Ms. Davis is our biggest cheerleader.
I really think they're a good group. They're a team. They exemplify what teamwork and, and a team is. So I'm very proud of that. So I can only say congratulations and go Florida. Just go out there and be the best that you can be and that's all you can do.
That's a question.
Sure.
So just as far as the chaperones go, again, I'm new. Do you take any? Yeah, well. But anyway, as far as like school nurses, are they ever involved in going on these trips? Or how do we handle that if someone gets, one of the girls get hurt? Is that someone there?
So, no. In terms of that, well, last year, our athletic trainer did come with us, but she just had a baby this year, so she's not going to be joining us. But Maya and I are both certified as coaches here. And with just the National Cheer Federation, we have to take all sorts of courses online to become a coach years ago and we have to renew it consistently. We're both first aid certified, CPR certified. And, you know, we keep, I'm also a teacher here at the school, so we keep in close contact with the nurses. And because we are responsible for them so much, we know every single allergy. And if anyone has an EpiPen or any issues at all, we're on top of that. So, yeah.
Again, new guy stuff. But I came from, I came from an environment where prepare for the worst and hope for the best. But so you guys got it covered. It's pretty good.
Right. And, you know, cheerleading is a very vigorous, very hard sport. And we are very safe and, you know, we have minimal injuries and, yeah.
That's what I learned again. Thank you.
Do you do any filming?
Do we have filming?
Yeah, when, when the competition is.
Oh, absolutely. Which view would you like? I mean, we have many, yes.
It'll be on TV. Back to my job, but anyway.
Live. No, I mean, that'd be interesting to see something.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course.
You can bring your routine back from Orlando if you'd like. We'll have it back.
Yeah. No, absolutely. Yes. I know. I know.
You sometimes post your routines after you win, after you win.
Yeah. So, I mean, I didn't even think we should have brought the states. We should have brought the virtual competition because it's only 2 minutes and 30 seconds. So, you know, blink of an eye, but it takes us like five months to do it. But, yeah, so it was televised last year, but only on varsity TV. So, but we definitely, we don't like to post it during the season because we don't want the other teams to see. But.
We don't want to let any secret happen.
No, absolutely not. It's our creativity. We have shared that. So, but after Florida will be, it's actually kind of nice. Where last year, Texas, was we were actually there at this week last year. So it's right after state. So we kind of transition. We have CACs here for the first time, which we're so excited about. And then we'll go to regionals, states, and then literally that Friday, we would leave for Florida. So they're going to be in the best shape of their lives and most excited to kind of move on. So, but yeah, and then we can post the video for you folks when you come back.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Motion of the Senate?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Narko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Babu?
Absolutely.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Narko, I tried to recruit your daughter from here. She kept her downstairs from me. So I told her.
She loves the cross and stuff, so.
I know. Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate it.
I'm going to practice right now. I'm going to start practice late.
Busy, busy.
It's a late practice because the gym is busy. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thanks, Jill.
The end of the hour, right here.
Mrs. May's report.
I'm waiting. All right. The first item on my agenda tonight, we have a acceptance of a donation to the Cruz Delgado Student Assistance Fund for automotive students. For those that, I don't know if everyone was on the committee when this got set up, but it was in memory of a student who passed a few years back, who was a member of the automotive department or was a student previous to his passing and was, always spoke very highly about the program and wanted to support the program. So just the acceptance of the donation here.
So move. Second.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Narko?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Babu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the, I guess, the resurfacing of the battery power project that we had seen a proposal on in November. At the time, we had tabled the vote on this as some of the committee members wanting to think a little bit more about it, just noodle on it a little bit. So I'm just bringing back the question on if we wanted to move forward with the process of signing the letter of intent to go through the year-long process of understanding if there is an actual project here to be had, get the final financial proposal and information and engineering taken care of. And as a reminder, the financial risk in this is a $6,000 break fee. If we got to the end, they found a proposal, they found a project that made sense financially, and we just decided at that point we wanted to walk away. It's $6,000 to get out.
So if National Grid tells us we can't do it?
No cost.
No cost, no how, no follow-up?
Yep. Yep. And they'll, and they'll put in the legwork up until the point that they either hit a wall and they get a no or find the final project for the.
And if they hit the wall and get the note, we get the, the utility and engineering information or no, that's a B.
I can ask. I didn't ask that question. I don't know that there'd be much value left. I guess it depends on how far they get through the process before they get to the no.
In, in your estimations, I know I asked you this before, I just want to, is this worth going into? Will it save us money with the off-peak? We can run it if it happens. Is it a cost savings to us?
Absolutely. I believe that there's easily, I think, I think there's two sides of the proposal I've seen. I think even on the low end, we're looking at, you know, $350,000 over 10 years. So 30, what's that, $35,000 a year? Not, not a huge sum of money, but not insignificant by any means. And on the high end, they've seen stuff up to, you know, closer to the million dollar range over the 10 years. So, you know, $100,000 a year, which makes a big offset to our electric bill, which, you know, that'd probably be almost a 20% offset to our total electric spend for the year if it's on the high end. On the low end, it's a little bit lower.
Right. And we'll use it off peak and peak hours. If we can use it mostly in peak hours, we'd be.
Yeah. And it does offer. It does offer a nice, a nice benefit to the school too. And just on the, the battery backup portion, because it can power the entire school for, you know, roughly four hours. I know we did dismiss once this year because we did have a power outage that we didn't come back from. In that scenario, we probably could have maintained school for the rest of the day because that would have got us, if not right to dismissal, just about to dismissal before the battery drained. And we could have been off, had the kids on the buses and off. So there's some, there's some hidden benefit there that, you know, and it might never happen again. The power might never go out, but it's a good backup beyond what the generator will power.
You know, we're in Tengsboro, right?
Oh, yeah.
Good, Ralph.
I've never seen power like this, but.
Since your last discussion with Seapower, I've read a couple of articles. Have you checked their financial statement, their stability?
I, I did not personally.
The toxicity involved in the battery and the cleanup process, is that bondable or insurable site-specific?
So if we went through with the project just based on the dollar figure of it, I'm relatively positive that we would have to have a performance bond in place just because I don't know if it'll fall under chap, I don't believe it falls under chapter 149, but even on a, a chapter 30B proposal or something like that, as soon as you hit a dollar threshold of, gosh, I hate to quote this wrong, but I want to say it's $250,000. You then have to at least do a 50% performance bond, which would mean that they would have to have, be bonded for at least 50% of the project cost. And if it goes over 5 million, which I think this will fall below, that's when you'd hit, two and a half or 5 million, I believe you hit 100% bonding threshold. So there is a possibility that where the battery does cost a few, a couple million dollars, I'd have to really look at when we get to the final proposal, what the proposed value is of the battery because they might be required to do, I think they'll be required at a minimum to 50% bonding. There's a possibility that it would be 100%.
You're very efficient with your presentations. That's the only area that I can see as being kind of risky is a problem.
Yep. Sure.
Either financial or some sort of toxicity.
A lot of mind to clean it up.
If my memory serves me correct, then wasn't there some discussion on the board
Either financial or some sort of toxicity.
Yep.
Lot of mind to clean it up.
If my memory serves me correct, then wasn't there some discussion on the board relative to, uh, location of, and, uh, I know we involved the fire department as far as collaborating with that.
That would be part of this process, you know, right now, just very preliminarily. We, we thought, and just, and this is just me looking at, you know, overheads and been talking with the people from Seapower and getting their sense, based on where our power comes in off of Sherburne, really, we'd, we'd have to be somewhere near that end of the campus, to the back gate area. Um, so as you're coming in that way, it's all wetlands to the wooded side. So then you're back towards the school side, uh, of the driveway. Uh, if you look next to the maintenance shed back there, the, no, shed, it's a big building, the maintenance building that's back there. Uh, there is a big section of grassed-in space just to the, I was looking from this direction, so the right, if you're coming in the back gate, it's to the left of the maintenance building. That appears to be large enough to house this battery. So it would still even have, you know, a pretty solid separation from the main building itself. Um, just in that, again, it's all very preliminary, just a thought of where it could go based on how our power comes and goes from the building. Um, but that's something that they'd have to really dig into as part of this process and say, all right, that's too far from the transformer, too close to the building, vice versa. We got to go back, we got to go over here or locate to a different spot.
I think this is a good time to bring, bring up because, uh, and I don't feel the right, right person, but as far as where it's wet and we get a lot of water there, this year has been exceptionally, as far as, we're not close to the, that close to the Merrimack or I know the Concord's worse, but river, but, uh, have we seen anything that might?
Not, not back that end of campus. The way this campus is built, it's kind of sloped, it's kind of sloped from Sherburne down to the boulevard.
So we had no issues here on the ground.
If, if.
So we shouldn't.
Anytime we see pooling at all, which we don't, we don't see a, a high frequency of that at all. It's generally kind of down more toward the baseball field, toward where the Scarlet River goes culvert-bound for the Merrimack, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's if we see things back up at all. It's generally over there and usually.
This has been exceptional, though, I mean.
There have been some, some large storms, but we've, we've fared well, even, even under heavy, heavy rain. We've been, we've been looking pretty good lately.
And ultimately, if I remember correctly, um, like, there's, um, fire suppression systems within this unit.
Yep.
And, um, I just lost my train of thought, uh, fire suppression. The savings is, the savings is large. Ultimately, we have the state fire marshal that would be in on this, um, discussion, as well as your local fire marshals. So as far as the safety goes of it, it seems like it's going, it has to go through a whole process and the process could take up to eighteen months?
This, this exploration process is easily a year on the, on the fastest side. Uh, I don't believe it'll even be that quick. I would say a year maybe to get through the study and then beyond that, you'd have to then look at what it would take to even construct or something like that. So we're talking, that best case scenario, maybe two to three years out, then it would actually be functional.
And based on everything we learned, at that point, if they give, they give us the whole report, at that point, we can choose to say, hey, you know, we've thought about this a little bit longer, we've decided we don't want to move forward on that.
Yep, yep. After we get through the engineering and all that, which roughly a year, eighteen months out, then we could back out at six thousand bucks and get a nice engineering report that'll be saved for future use if, if needed.
And have the opportunity to keep our school open if we have a run into a power outage and realistically save up to five hundred thousand to a million dollars.
Something in there.
I'd like to put in a motion to approve the execution of the LOI, LOI with Seapower after successful review by the school closing.
Go to the second.
Second.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Babu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
All right, next item on my agenda this evening is some surplus books and textbooks from the ELA Department. Uh, they've done a little bit of cleaning out a closet since the new, uh, cluster, Department Head has taken over for, um, the ELA and Social Studies Department. And in doing so, they found many novels that are no longer taught or used and then, uh, textbooks that are, I got to imagine at least twenty-five years old because the accompanying materials for them were cassette tapes and I think VHS, which we don't even really have the, the ability to read more than we want to within the school.
Freddie still has that stuff.
Well, he's, he's welcome to a, a copy of Language of Literature, if interested, you know.
I actually asked the Lowell School System to see if they could maybe use some of these books.
Did they say it was a little bit too old for them?
Yeah, yeah, they indicated it probably won't work, but you just never know.
Thank God.
And we will, and we will reach out, as, as we do with all disposal, I will reach out to the local, um, libraries as well as school districts and see, um, there's some of these hard copy, um, novels are in pretty good shape, so there might be an opportunity. Maybe they don't want a lot of a hundred and twenty copies of Unbroken, but, you know, maybe five for the shelf might be, uh, something that they'd be interested in.